All right, welcome everyone to our November 10th, 2020 Village Board meeting. Apologize for our five-minute delay and a little, again, technical difficulties, but I believe we should be live now and everybody should be hearing us very well. To start off the meeting, I'd like to just announce that this meeting is being recorded for everybody's information, and I'd like to lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to try something new tonight. So we are going to be taking public comment, and we are going to ask anybody who wants to make public comment to dial 845-876-7068. You will be picked up over a speaker here in our room. Your voice will be picked up by our amp and broadcast over our livestream audio for everybody to hear you. We can only take one call at a time. If you get a busy signal, please be patient. We will get to you. I would like to ask anybody who calls in to limit their comments to three minutes, and if somebody has the same comment, please be respectful, and if you want to call in, just say you had the same comment to move forward. So again, we're going to open up for public comment. Martina, you'll have to turn your mic off. I'm going to repeat the number. Again, anybody who wants to call in, you can call in by dialing from any phone, 845-876-7068. Martina, we did get one email comment into the media. Admin, do you still have that while we're waiting?
I actually just have a message from Susanna. I'm on the Facebook page and the middle livestream. I just tried to call the comment number and got the fax machine and a busy signal.
Hmm.
I didn't hear what she said.
She said she got a fax machine and a busy signal. The, let's see. Back to the...
We're going to do a test. Martina, it's not ringing there. I got the fax machine as well. Do we have a dial tone, Martina? Double check. No.
We lost our dial tone.
Oh, okay.
Public comment in the time of COVID.
It's on plug.
That sounds better.
Is the line on, Martina?
Yeah, it's on.
All right, so we're going to try again. We had a loose connection. Anybody who wants to make public comment, please dial 845-876-7068.
Too many things to watch out of sequence.
That's hilarious.
It's killing me. Any comments? 10 live viewers, no comments at the moment.
Martina, I do remember what the media was. One, if you can't find it, I can...
From Roger?
What?
From Roger?
No, I mean, the one that was sent to media.admin is the only one I saw earlier, not lately.
Okay, there was one sent at 5:58 and a half. Can I restart with that one?
I'm not in email right now. I can be. But the one I do remember is from Susanna. Susanna had asked, "We had a leaf truck and wanted to know why we were not currently using our leaf truck." I would like to turn that over to Trustee Lewitt.
Okay. I'm going to take my mask off so people can hear me. Unfortunately, we've run into some problems with our leaf truck in that the leaf truck is designed to vacuum up leaves only. It is not designed to vacuum up small brush, rocks, other things that people have been putting into their piles. So we've had an issue as the leaf truck has been going down the street. We've been vacuuming up pieces of wood, pieces of trellis, larger sticks and stones and such, and it's damaged the leaf truck. So right now, the leaf truck is out. The fan or major impeller needs to be repaired. We're anticipating it being done tomorrow, and we should see the leaf truck back on the road, hopefully on Thursday. But it is really very important for everybody to realize that the piles on the streets are really for leaves or for plant material only, either sticks, twigs, that kind of stuff. I've seen myself things like old trellises, things like that. They cannot go into our composting and our recycling stream. So we have a leaf truck. We need to treat it properly, please. Leaves only in the pile.
And then brush and sticks should be in a separate pile.
Correct. Brush and sticks should be in a separate pile, leaves only in one pile. And with them clean, with those two clean piles, we should be able to pick up pretty efficiently.
Okay. I do have Rogers. I'll read it. Roger Kwan sent an email saying, "I have a question regarding compensation for the court staff. Clearly dissolving the village court results in going from three part-time justices, one and a half full-time, to two part-time justices, and so the caseload per justice increases. While the justices, will the justices be fairly compensated for the extra caseload? Can their salary be increased or changed in the middle of their term, or is this a detail left to the discretion of the town board? Also, one clerk will lose their job in a time of COVID. Is that person going to be offered a job with similar salary and benefits? I want to know that people will be taken care of, and that is not certain." Does anybody want to answer? I can start and say, Roger, we've discussed this on both our forums that you participated in, and that the recommendation by LaBerge was to go to two full-time clerks to be selected by the judges. The judges, once they select their clerks, they will be offered, if, for instance, if one judge selects our clerk from Village, as discussed on the last forum, that clerk will be offered a job in the town of Rhinebeck at the same pay with their benefit programs. So two full-time clerks, both selected by the judges, both being offered at that time with that. The third person, the town currently has two part-time, we have one full-time. The town has said that that third person who is not selected will be offered another job within the town with corresponding hours. Okay? Your question about compensation for extra caseload, I don't see the answer, I don't see your request there for extra caseload. The judges are currently doing village caseload and town caseload, so the caseload should remain the same, although the distribution of the caseload in the town, as emailed to you earlier, will be dispersed across two judges instead of in the village court only having one judge and one backup judge. As a reminder, Village has only one elected official and one appointed judge. I hope that answers your question. Again, if anybody wants to call in, 845-876-7068.
Do you want one more test?
Okay. All right, should we move on?
We could offer the number again later and see if anyone...
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant. We did have a public hearing right before this meeting with only slight attendance, and the board did discuss several of the options that were presented. So I'm going to open this up to the board as to what the board would like to do in regard to moving forward with the Community Development Block Grant. Discussion time.
Discussion. So we discussed reapplying the same or similar application as last year for creation of a sidewalk on West Chestnut Street. And my question is, if we were to approach Frost Foundation again to come in as an additional funder to help us cost share, could we do that prior to the application to see if this is something that they would be interested in? How does that part of the process work?
Last time, we did it in parallel. We submitted an application to Frost in parallel to this application after our letter of intent was sent to the county. And then when we got their reply, then we pulled our application from the county last year.
Did they, I don't remember exactly, we had some kind of conditional...
Hi, you're on with the Village Board of Trustees. Would you just state your name and then begin with your question?
Hi, it's Susanna. I'm actually maybe getting a video now. I sent the email, I sent in my question on email. I wanted to know, and I don't know if I'll be able to hear your answer because I'm not getting a livestream, but about the leaf truck, didn't we purchase one? And why am I seeing the old way of getting the leaf picked up?
So I will answer this question. Basically, the leaf truck has been damaged by excessive debris in the leaf piles. The leaf truck can only vacuum up leaves. It can't vacuum up small branches, rocks, and other material. And we've had an issue with people commingling their leaves and their brush piles. And so right now, the major fan impeller in the leaf truck is damaged. We hope to have it tomorrow back. But it's been an issue for us, and really do want to emphasize to residents that you can't commingle your leaves and your brush pile. They have to be in two different places, or else the leaf truck doesn't work very well, or it's going to get broken again. So yes, we have had an issue with the leaf truck. Hopefully, we'll be back on the road as of tomorrow, and we will be scheduling folks going out to go out and vacuum up those leaves.
Okay, thank you. I'm still not, I don't know if anyone else is having a problem with the livestream, but I can't stream it. So I could hear you over the phone, but I'm not getting the meeting at all.
On Facebook?
I just said, Martina, a picture of my screen. It's just black.
Yeah, I've received your picture, but I'm not sure why it's doing that. I'm actually watching it on my phone as we speak.
Yes, I'm on my phone, and it worked, you know, most of the other times. I'm not getting anything right now, but I don't know what's going on. All right. I keep getting a error message on Facebook too, so I don't know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll return back to Community Development Block Grant.
Did, weren't we conditioning our application on the Frost grant, and we were trying to, like, make a conditional, another...
That's what we did last year. We made, if we did not receive the additional funding from an alternative source in addition to the county, we were not going to go forward.
Right.
That was the condition last year.
Was that a strike against us? I don't remember.
Pardon?
Was that a strike against us because we...
No. We were actually, we were actually moving very well into the county process.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with that idea, just trying again.
All right. I mean, I would love to figure out a way, maybe not this, maybe not this year, but to figure out a way to start using this for affordable housing. But I don't know if we can pull together a plan for that in the amount of time that it takes for this year's grant cycle.
And with this funding, there are other opportunities for that as well.
Yep.
Yeah, this particular grant is only for the actual building of affordable housing.
Yeah, so I mean, at some point, once we have a plan for affordable housing...
Wasn't this capped at $100,000?
It's $150,000.
Oh.
Yeah, for, well, it depends, for affordable housing, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we submit a letter of intent to the county for, again, applying for the sidewalk on West Chestnut Street.
And who's, Vanessa, are you going to be heading up the...
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'm just going to kind of crib what we had from last year.
Yeah, we have a copy.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So with that, I'd like to read a resolution that will authorize us to go forward. This is from an activity titled "The West Chestnut Street Sidewalk," whereas the Village of Rhinebeck is participating in the 2021 Duchess County Community Development Block Grant Consortium, and whereas input from, input from citizens and groups has been received and considered at a public hearing on November 10th, 2020, with residents to talk about ideas for submission to the Community Development Block Grant for 2021. And whereas the sidewalk contribute to pedestrian and motor safety, installing a new sidewalk from Montgomery to Oak Street along West Chestnut Street would make walking to the parks and library on the route easier and safer, plus serve the residents of Oak, Prospect, and Chestnut by providing safe access to downtown. Whereas, there was an agreement from the community that walkability and bikability were important to the village residents, and this project meets all of that criteria. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2021 application to the Duchess County Community Block Grant Program for the above referenced activity is approved, be it further resolved that the submission of the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development is authorized. Do I have a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept the resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda, permissive referendum for the resolution of 92120 date selection. Do we have that? I believe this was for the, wasn't this a carryover from last month for the, us to submit to the county?
I'm not sure.
I'm looking, I don't see this on, on the...
Isn't this court consolidation?
Oh, this is the court consolidation? No, sorry. My mistake. So let's discuss permissive referendum for the resolution of 92120 date selection. Oh, date selection, yes. This is the subject, apologize, this is to set a date for the special election for the court consolidation. If everybody, as everybody knows, we have to select a date that within 10 days and no greater than 60 days from the filing of the petition, which was on October 19th. So I counted out the days. That takes us up to December 18th.
The day of the week is December 18th?
It's a Friday. Well, I guess, I guess what day, do you want to hold on a Tuesday? Do you want to hold on a weekend? I guess we, Martina, you found out that there are basically, anybody can apply for an absentee ballot, no, with no cause. COVID is an acceptable absentee ballot.
Yes, so just as the village election that we just had...
You're going to have to get really close to that mic, Martina.
Just like the village election that we just had in September, for anybody who wishes to use an absentee ballot, you'd have to fill out an absentee ballot application, submit that to me, I would then mail you out an absentee ballot.
And COVID is a valid reason for requesting an absentee ballot?
It is.
So if they call Village Hall and request one, we will mail them an, we will mail them an absentee ballot that they can mail back to us, correct?
Yes, yep, and the reason would be temporary illness.
Yeah.
But just fear of COVID is an...
It's acceptable. It's an acceptable reason.
Risk of spreading and catching.
Mm-hmm.
So do we want to go on a Tuesday? Like, do I do, I mean, village elections have been usually noon to nine.
Do we have a meeting that, that night, though?
Well, we can select December 15th if you want, because we're going to need time to create a ballot. We're needing time for a lot of people.
Yeah, we need time, yeah.
Yeah, we need time.
The board meeting would be on the 8th of December.
Okay, good, then.
So for people to receive their ballots, you know, us to make the ballots, and so Tuesday, I'd like to propose Tuesday, December 15th.
15th.
From noon to nine. Keep it, keep it just like all of our other elections.
At the firehouse?
Yes.
Underneath us, yeah.
Yeah, for those who want to walk in, they could walk in at the firehouse like we did the last village election as well.
Do we need permission from the firehouse?
I already got it.
Sorry.
All right. It'll be chilly.
It'll be a little bit different. Rather than having an open bay in the back, we'd utilize one of the doors. The bay in the front would still be open, and we'd bring in some heaters.
Yes. The fire bays are heated, so, and we can control the access by the side doors to go in and out. Unless it's another 70-degree day like we have in today.
And the election is for all registered voters?
All registered village voters.
All registered village voters.
Right, yeah, I think, I think it's important to make that point clear, that this is a village vote, not a town and village vote.
Correct.
My question is, who writes the question? Who writes the referendum question?
Well...
I think the village does.
We do.
Yeah.
Right? And then we'll get it reviewed by legal and then put it on the ballot.
Okay, well, we all need to look at that, I mean...
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, and I think actually while we're doing this, it would be great if we could take the time to also schedule some more Q and A's and figure out whatever else we'd like to do for communications leading up to this.
I would like to get into that right after we decide this, if that's okay. Right? So I'd like to make a motion that we set December 15th, Tuesday, from noon to nine for the special election for the court consolidation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, okay. So Lydia, back to your comment. Yes. Should we be doing more public forums? Should we be getting out letters? Should we be sending out more information? I think the answer is yes, but I'm...
Yeah.
So I think we should have at least one more, and then let's have our, let's have the referendum question written and then subject to public comment on a Teams meeting.
Yeah, I think it would also be super helpful for those village voters who haven't been able to participate in a Q and A for whatever reason, if we could send out a flyer of some sort, either through the mail or in this, in the way Vanessa, that you did the CDBG flyer, just hand them out with just information and...
I mean, I would like to see a mailer go to all village voters. It can be a, you know, a fact sheet, list the, list the, list the date and time of the referendum. I mean, we've had a lot of questions, especially in the state of COVID, that people, it's hard to find information, and I think if we can, just basically everybody who's eligible, we can mail them information and tell them when the, tell them when the referendum is. I think that's a, that's a good way to go.
When do the water bills go out?
I was just going to say, we could send, we're doing zone three and four, so we could send some of them out with the, to some of our first water bill.
This is a standalone issue. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate.
You just want it separate.
I think it should be separate, yeah.
And if they're not going out to the first, that doesn't really leave people enough time if they plan to do absentee votes.
Yeah, we should have the deadline for absentee ballot application.
I have to create a timeline based off of the date you just selected, so I will notify everybody what those dates are for when you can use your absentee votes.
And I think we could also, we could set a time for another info Q and A session and have that printed on the flyer as well, for the mailer or whatever.
Yeah.
So why don't we set a date for another forum? Okay?
Would that be...
Should we do it on a non-Wednesday night or a non-Thursday night? Because we've done a Wednesday night and a Thursday night, and maybe people who couldn't have participated on those nights might be able to participate on a different night.
Or could we do it before the December 8th board meeting?
We could go the first, we could go Tuesday, the first.
And maybe in the afternoon? I don't know, I'm trying to catch people whose schedules, you know, I don't know if they have kids or something and they can't do a 7 o'clock Q and A, although these days...
I think also, the other thing is that, that, I think that, Martina, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the sessions are recorded and available to view later...
Yes.
On the village website.
Yes.
Right, so if anybody, so if anybody misses a session and they're curious, can actually go to the village website and watch a recording of the, of the meeting. So that information, makes that information available.
Yeah.
I kind of think evenings are better. I'm going to say...
I mean...
So the current date's just November 30th, Monday?
Is there, no, no, there will not be a town board meeting.
Is that...
Monday, November 30th.
The day after the Thanksgiving holiday?
It is.
Everybody's on their computers anyway for Cyber Monday.
Unless you want to go to December 1st, which would be the Tuesday.
How do you want to have this meeting? Teams or like this?
Teams. Teams meeting like we did.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd say Tuesday, but...
Tuesday, the first?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yep, and then we can have those two dates on a mailed communication.
Do we know, again, since it's Teams, we don't, there shouldn't be any interruption with any other scheduled events, so we're good there.
Right.
Unless we know of other outside events that would prohibit people.
I mean, the only thing that happens on December 1st on a Tuesday is the planning board meeting, but...
That's at 7?
That's at 7, so we could do this at 6?
So, we've been doing it at 6:00 PM.
Okay, then that works.
Okay.
So I can make a motion, we set Tuesday, December 1st at 6:00 PM for our next public forum, and in the meantime, we need to get a flyer available, okay? And we need, and Martina will need to get the draft for the referendum question completed. Okay?
And Brett, your concern is that it should be neutral, basically. The wording should be neutral.
Yeah, I mean, you can give whatever answer you want, depending on how you word the question, right? It's all solved, right?
But it should be neutral.
It's got to be, got to be worded correctly.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a second for December 1st for the next public forum?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any other discussion on the court consolidation? Having none, let's move on. Martina, I'm going to turn it back over to you for 2021 village election and the open offices.
Yes, so the open offices for the 2021 March election would be the mayor and two trustee positions, Rick Lewitt, Lydia Slavy, and also for the elected judge as of right now.
Correct. Okay. All right, and the calendar events, do we have the calendar events available?
As things come up, I will post a notice to let you know. It is a lot of dates in here, so as, as things are coming up, I'll post notices about them.
Can you at least tell us what the first date is on that? So people are warned.
Sure. Let me see. Sorry, it's a, it includes things that don't apply to village elections, so I have to kind of do a little read-through.
Okay. Okay, well, then, sorry.
Right, but what day would that be? Yes, Monday, November sixteenth.
Do we need the date of the election on that?
The date of the election is Tuesday, March sixteenth.
Okay, all right. Next on the agenda is village and town resolution for solar repair. I think everybody on the board knows, we have a solar system on this building, right above us right here. It does need some repair. We have a communication device, and several of the end-phase optimizers that communicate to the solar panels also need to be repaired. We are now outside of the warranty period where repairs were automatically being done, so this becomes now chargeable, a chargeable expense. We received an estimate to do the repairs of what we have, and it was just shy of $2,000 to do. And that means every time we need to do this, we need to go seek three bids, we need to go through the process of selecting somebody to come do the repair. So Karen has been looking into it, as well as others, and what we thought to do was to go for a joint I M A. with the town. The town currently has a, a system on their roof, on Town Hall. They also have a system at the highway garage, and they also have a system at the transfer station, and one at the bathhouse. And we have our system here. And we felt that if we could combine our efforts to sleep, to select one vendor, get best price, to maintain all of them, since all the systems are the same, they're of the same design, same parts, same manufacturer, whole nine yards, it makes sense if we could go one, rather than every time we needed to do a repair, to go out and go through the process of getting three bids.
Do a one-year contract.
And, yes, yes, so I was going to get into that. So what we put together was a plan of what we would ask a vendor to submit to, and we would go out for an R F P. And there's a list of fifteen items which are out there on the cloud for you to read, but it basically covers all the monitoring, you know, looking for issues, notifying us if there's any potential problems, doing a yearly inspection, right, and managing the O E M. repair and warranty claim process for us, and then also maintaining records. So that would be for town and, and village. The town has gone over this last night, and they unanimously approved going in together on an I M A., and they requested that we would go out for quotations that should include any startup fees and any annual fees requested for the inspections of the site we listed, and then allow them to come and inspect the site before submitting an R F P., and then to the town clerk and to the village clerk that it, that can be scheduled, and then we can arrange for an inspection, and then we can request a quote. And we were going to ask for quotes to be submitted to both town and village by December fifteenth. All right. So first, before going any farther, I'd like to open up for discussion on going into a joint relationship with the town and the village for keep monitoring, repairing, looking over our solar systems.
In general, it sounds like a good idea. If it's a maintenance contract, how do we divvy up the cost of the maintenance contract?
So that's what the next part would be, Rick, and that's a great question, because we need to develop the I M A. So one of the things is, to move forward, if you read the resolution that we put together for both town and village, whereas both the town and the village of Rhinebeck have solar power generation installations that require regular maintenance, and whereas maintaining these facilities would be more economical if they were done under one contract by one service provider, therefore it be resolved that the attached requests for price locations be politicized, and that an I M A. be negotiated with the village and the town to establish payment and cooperation protocols.
So we wouldn't do the I M A. until the quote is received and accepted by the town?
In parallel.
Right.
We could do both. And then we would have to approve the I M A., they would have to approve the I M A., and in the meantime, we would get, be getting quotes to move forward.
Okay.
We do have, right now, seven of our panels down.
Wow.
That need to be fixed.
Twelve, right, seven out of twelve?
Seven out of ninety-nine.
Oh, okay.
We have ninety-nine up on the roof. Yeah, seven out of twelve would be a lot, yeah. But we can't monitor them because we have no communications tool, and therefore, the manufacturer requires that you have the communication before they will warranty the repl, the replacement. So we got to fix it all. That's why it was in somewhat less than $2,000 to do that repair.
Got it. And then how is that, I mean, is, is John Fenton working with the, I mean, like, how would we have the village part of the, the bid process?
So that's what we got to work through in the, you know, so.
In the I M A.
The manufacturer would bid on all the systems.
Right.
Right? And then whatever they submit for the fee, we would have to negotiate what we think our appropriate share of that fee would be.
Okay.
Kind of like what we do right now for the I T. system. We don't, we pay based on our terminals. The town pays based on their terminals. I would think, in my thought, it would be proportionate just the same way.
Yeah.
Where we would divide that up based on.
If we have ninety-nine panels and they have, yeah.
And they have X, right? We just define the ratio and.
Okay.
And, and break that up. But that we would work out in the I M A.
Okay.
Seems like you could base this around Congress.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution for both town and village to work jointly together on the management and maintenance of all of our solar systems in the, in the town and in the village. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda, police reform. Everybody, I've been keeping everybody up to date on what we're doing. We do have our community stakeholders that we meet with every other week, as well as we are meeting with the county every other week as well, to go over county plans and factoring them into our village plan. But to give you an update of what we've been doing in the past, since we talked about this last month, is we've been covering topics that cover law enforcement and diversion programs, which essentially is dealing with the types of calls that we have to get in the village of Rhinebeck. Deals with mental health calls, drug abuse calls, concerned citizen calls. How do we handle those calls? And why are police involved? And what, how can we better manage our police force to manage those calls inside of our operation? And what is the process and procedure for those? Because some of them do require police, and some of them you can't just delegate out to somebody else, right? You, you know, if there's a domestic issue, the first thing you want to do is make sure that the scene is safe. Well, you're not going to send in a social worker to make sure the scene is safe based on that call. So what we did, we brought in the Duxes County nine-one-one call center, Dana Smith, the commissioner of nine-one-one center, to go over that process and procedure so that we were all talking and learning from the same page about how those calls are distributed based on when they come into the nine-one-one center, right? Now, I'm called during the day, we could get a call directly into our police, and our dispatch would also do the same. But just so everybody knows, we also deal with the county mobilization team, so that we can call them if we're going out on a call. Sometimes they call us, based on the type of call that is coming in, and so we deal with this jointly together to work these calls. But the best situation is, how can you best handle work those calls? I sent the board the last announcement from the county, where you saw that the county is increasing their countywide mobilization task force. Because currently, there was one, now they're going to increase it to cover a broader area within the county. They're also increasing their support at the stabilization center. We've had issues where we've taken people who have issues to the stabilization center only to be sent away. And then we have to go to the Mid-Hudson Regional Center to have them admitted into the hospital. And it got to the point where we were bypassing the stabilization center, right, because it was, there was nobody there to handle the call that we needed. So they're going to be, they're going to be working on improving that, and that you saw in the county's letter and in the county guideline. So that was a big part of what we've been discussing in this past month. It has to deal with how the impact on our village police is being handled, transportation and receiving of people, because that's an issue. We have two, we have two cars on call at a time that are covering, and if you have one that's now heading south, and you only left with one, and you have a major incident going on, we have one car, one officer, one dispatch, and we don't have the appropriate coverage. So we're looking to try to keep things closer to us here within, in the village. We also had Officer Jonathan Wilson, who joined us a year ago. We recognized him a year ago. He has now taken the train-to-trainer on procedural justice. So what basically that is, that's a whole rollout in terms of, all the police are going to be trained on procedural justice. And how do you internalize, how do they as police now internalize handling justices and calls? So he gave us an overview of what he's been learning, and now he's going to be training not only our village P D., but also assisting the county with paying for that.
Can you, what does procedural justice mean?
So procedural justice comes down to, I'm trying to think of the best way to explain this, Vanessa.
Go for a short answer.
Yeah.
Um, basically, treating people fairly and with respect.
Right.
And the idea is that in an encounter with a, a law enforcement officer, there should be a level of transparency about what's going on, what they're doing, why they're doing it, that they should be, they should be informing you what's going on. In other words, if you're being pulled over, why are you being pulled over? What's going on here? What are your options? If you're stopped, all those kinds of things. So that people feel like they actually can have a dialogue with the officer that they're, that they're working with. It really turns out that a deep part of police-community relationships is what's called, is based on what's called legitimacy. And if people feel like they're given a fair shake and are heard when they're, when they're involved with law enforcement, even if the outcome is something they don't like, if they feel like they've been treated fairly, then they will feel like, hey, I have legitimate interaction with law enforcement. And I think that's really what we're aiming to build, and I think what other departments want to build, what our department wants to build as well. Because it turns out, when that relationship is established, it's better for everybody involved. So procedural justice, and I think there's also some implicit bias training that's come up to.
Well, that's going to be later.
Later, yeah.
Yeah, so that's phase two. Everybody go through the procedural justice between now and January of next year, but later in the late summer, early fall, the counties, and the county will be setting up implicit biasing training, you know, to be able to, you know, for our police force to be able to understand their feelings as well, to go through this, which is very important.
I mean, I feel like our officer was very enthusiastic about, about what he learned and the ability to pass it on to other people. I mean, I think he, he felt like it was a pretty profound experience in terms of how he was going to go about his, his, his job. I think he was pretty excited to be able to pass on this kind of information, so I, I think that this issue actually goes to some, some of the roots of some of the questions that people have. So it's very important.
Good, that's great.
No, it, all of our discussions have been, I think, pretty good, really, in terms of not only educating our community stakeholders that can then work with when we get to the next stage of going out, actually having public forums on this as well, which is required for us to do, so that everybody has a basis of understanding. I mean, we learn things, we're all learning some of the things that, you know, our code of conduct. We brought in our, we're, we're opening up everything. I've told you about our policies and procedure book, which is two hundred and eighty-seven pages, right, that we sent out to Lexa Paul that the board approved. Now we started talking about our student resource office conduct, contract with the school, and we're involving the youth from the school, as well as our S R O. officers, plus myself and Officer Dunn, into that collaboration with the school to, how can we best address this? There's some things that are legally bound. You're told by the state what you have to do as an S R O. The, so school has budgetary items which they need to enforce in terms of, if this, if they say they want you there full-time, maybe the school can't afford that, I don't know. But, so all of that is now going to play, and we're looking at building a subcommittee to look at redrafting our student resource contract with our school system, which I think is fantastic. The other thing is code of conduct I just mentioned. Our, our code of conduct was drafted, do you remember the date? I don't know, is prior to two thousand and five, right? And if you look at our code of conduct, code of conduct is, how, it really is, what is the officer's responsibility when they're addressing the community? How are they to, what are their rules and their regulations and the guidelines for they? So we're now looking at, can we redraft this code of conduct? As one of the major items we want to look forward to improving going forward for our, our police force. So good things, right? So, in addition to that, we added two new people to the, to the committee. These are required by the state. You're required to have, you know, a district, a D A. on your committee, and you're also required to have a special prosecutor or a public defender on your committee. So we reached out to Bill Grady, who is the chief investigator, you know, to attend, and he is, will, he is, as long as with Matthew Weiselt, who is his, I guess, second-in-command. And we also asked Thomas Angel, who's our public defender, to also join us. So they, they're now participating in our discussions with our community stakeholders to broaden our outreach as well. So anyways, that's where we're at, police reform.
Can I, can I, one more little thing?
Yes.
Also on the phone call, we did have the people in charge of nine-one-one, and I was at least heartened to hear that they were starting to take a customer-centered approach, I do such jargon, to the nine-one-one call, because frequently, people have been saying, I make a nine-one-one call, it goes in there, and then it's a black box, I don't know what's happening. And it was pretty clear, as folks were talking, that they were like, hey, can we get more feedback? Who's going to be responding? When are they going to be responding? How do we know what's going on? And it sounded like, at the nine-one-one call center, they are looking to try to institute some reforms. They're going to actually bring some of the mental health folks closer, literally closer to the dispatchers, and I think start to look at how they handle calls. It was, I mean, I don't know how well it'll go, but at least he was speaking the right words.
Fascinating.
All right, so can we get into department reports? Karen? Treasury report.
Okay, the treasurer's report is for the period ending October thirty-first. The tax collector account ended the month with one million, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. The general fund ended the month with seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The water fund ended the month with two hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents. And the sewer fund ended the month with five hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-one cents. Our New York class investments yielded point zero eight-five, but it's still yielding something. Vouchers presented for payment, including prepaid's, in the general fund, total ninety thousand, seventy-five dollars and four cents. We have one from the Capital Project General for the Legion Park, from the Capital Park General Parking, in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Water fund, total thirty-eight thousand, nine ninety-three, forty-five. From the Capital Water Department, we have the tank landscaping bill for sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. In the sewer fund, prepaid's and regular October bills, total thirty-one thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. From the Sewer Capital Project, the wastewater treatment plant filter building rehab, we only have one bill for forty-five dollars and eleven cents for, for the daily news to post the, the bid. The water main project totaled one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents, and we have one espro in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. An operating statement has been provided with revenue and expenditures through November tenth, and it's also on the cloud. Water wastewater billing adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Wastewater Department liaison, and have been presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the water and wastewater invoice changes as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, and then regarding penalty and late fees, since COVID started in March, penalty and late fees have been waived, and I just want to. and late fees have been waived, and I just want to ask for kind of a progress from the board. Does the board want to continue this until December 31st, 2020? I think, is that when the?
The governor's expanded that, that emergency period at least till late December, so.
It's been extended.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, has waiving the penalties and fees caused a demonstrable, you know, impact on the receipts?
No, not much.
Okay.
But, I mean, if I just, I'm just letting the board know, I don't just want to go on and if the board says go into it, pull in the summer.
So people aren't, they're not abusing the privilege?
No.
Yeah, so that's good.
And we have, like, because, well, four village residents, you know, we have a means of collecting because in April unpaid water sewer goes on their village tax. So, you know, we, we have a means of collecting it, so.
Yeah, but we've waived them for now.
We've.
We've waived the late fees.
Correct.
Right. But if they don't pay the bill, that's still collectible.
Yeah.
Based on just, there's two things. One is, the one is the billing, the other is the finance charges for late payment.
Right, exactly.
What we've waived is the finance charges for the, for the late payment.
Correct, yes.
So I, clear to everybody.
Okay.
I think as long as the governor's order is in effect, we should continue.
Okay.
Do we need a resolution?
I don't think we need a resolution because the board authorized to waive them. I just wanted to make sure that we still wanted to.
I think we're saying we're continuing.
Thank you for staying on top of that.
All right, regarding FEMA, I have filed for reimbursement for items, the village purchase for COVID-19, for PPE, social distancing, outdoor dining, and legal, and so far they total $15,087. Again, I have a meeting with FEMA on Monday. I'm not sure how much we'll recoup, but I will do, make my best effort to get as much back as we can.
Does that include fire department, PPE, and?
Yes.
Okay.
And police.
Yep.
I do notice some municipalities have already started to receive funding.
Great.
But it's being closely scrutinized as to what you, what they're being paid for.
Yep.
So we're learning.
Correct, yeah.
You know, we had a bigger pile, let's be honest. We had a bigger pile of expenses that we said, like our camera here, because of holding the meetings we have to hold, but that stuff, it was very clear based on the feedback we were getting from other municipalities that it had to be PPE really related, so.
Yep.
But I, I will, I will work with our FEMA representative to get some.
Yeah, thank you.
The water main project, the closing with EFC is scheduled for December 17 to convert our short-term funding into our long-term debt. And as far as I know, I'm on track with having everything that they need. I still have, in addition to what I just read for the bills, I will probably have another engineer bill, attorney bill, and a bill from bond counsel. I believe the contractor has been completely paid.
Great.
So I'll keep you posted on that as we go along. Delinquent taxes, a list of delinquent taxes has been sent to Douglas County Rural Property for re-levee, and it's not much different than any other year, so it didn't really have an effect on it. Budget amendments, I have a few budget amendments that I'm requesting from the board. I don't feel I would read through all of them. The one is just to allocate the grants for the fire department from the Frost Grant. It's a budget amendment from the expense account, 3410, from the Frost Grant revenue account that we've already received, that 2705, in the amount of $14,818. The, for the police, I'm requesting a budget amendment from the police sergeants' salary to the newly item that we added for the executive order of $25,000. Just, I mean, it's still being paid out, it's just moved to where we're charging it to. There's three budget amendments I'm going to request from contingency. One is for the building itself, for the building 1620, this building, $1,0125, and that's for the unforeseen expense of pest control that we didn't budget for. Also, police fees on employees. We had talked about the law enforcement standard policy that they are with Lexapro, and they're just run such a tight budget that they don't even really have that to, out of this year for fees on employees. So I'm requesting that at $9,0727. And then for the trustee's supply line, 10104, I'm requesting an increase of 500. And 310 is for the COVID signs, so I, I will be trying to get that back, but I don't know that I will.
I'd like to make a motion that we send, we approve the budget adjustments as presented by treasurer, by the treasurer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
That was a lot, but that's all I have.
Okay. Building, I mean, excuse me, police and court. We have a police report for our October monthly summary. I always like to read these in, so people know what's going on in both the town and the village. Total number of incidents in the town is 14. Total number of incidents in the village is 101. Total number of tickets in the town is six. Total number of tickets in the village, 63. Total number of arrests, zero. Number of accidents was nine. The police would also like to report that we do have our solar power speed signs, and we do publish the data that we collect from them, we do collect it and review it. The one on Knollwood northbound from the, has a current update of 25,709 vehicles, of which two vehicles were traveling 40 to 45 mile per hour, and 90% of the vehicles were less than 40 mile per hour, but the average speed was 21.1 mile per hour on Knollwood. Montgomery northbound sign, 185,287 vehicles.
Wow.
99.8% of the vehicles were traveling less than 40 mile per hour. The average speed was 25.56. Montgomery southbound, 179,303 vehicles, 99.6 of the vehicles were less than 40, average speed 26.2. The police has also been helping us with brush pickup to help manage traffic flow while the guys are out on doing that. They provided support during the election coverage across the street and at Halloween night. So that's the police report.
That's a, that's a quarter a year, a quarter of a year. That's an enormous number.
That's a quarter of a year, yep.
So it's 100,000 vehicles a year on Knollwood.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah.
And a lot, and.
A lot of people driving to school.
I guess so.
So please drive safely. There's a lot of kids also walking. What's concerning me with our leaves out and the kids walking, so please, everybody, please be careful. You know, there's so many leaves out on our streets that we're trying to pick up, and the kids are walking around them, so please drive carefully. Okay. Building planning and zoning. Lydia.
Well, before I get to the, to the updates, I just wanted to let you know that we brought in around $12,500 in fees in October, so we're making money hand over fist. So the planning board had a vacancy, and the mayor appointed Jeff Christensen to fill it, in consultation with both myself and the chairman of the board. And I, for one, am very excited to see how Jeff can bring his fresh perspective to the board. I also, when I was appointed into the, into the board of trustees, I left a vacancy at the ZBA. I was an alternate, but still, it was a vacancy. And we have appointed Tim Decker into that position, hoping that he brings his tremendous wealth of knowledge and longtime participation in village volunteering, in village, in village committees to the ZBA. So Gary appointed both of those people, and I'm very excited that they're participating in those ways. So that is good news about that. There, we appoint, terms come up every year, and so if you're interested in either board, please, you know, let Martina know, let me know, and we will certainly keep you in mind as those vacancies appear. Outdoor dining task force. So I am pulling together a post-COVID outdoor dining task force, and I've spoken to a variety of restaurant and shop owners in the village, and I, I wasn't going to start doing any major work on that until after November 30th, when unfortunately a lot of them will have more time on their hands. But if you are interested in participating in that, it is a post-COVID outdoor dining task force, please let me know. And Gary, we were going to talk about how we could be helpful to these businesses, actually, once everybody had to go inside.
Right, so, thank you.
Yep.
So everybody, we made everybody aware that again in November, our permit with the state DOT expires. So we're going to be starting to collect all the barriers. We've set as December 3rd and 4th, working with the county to start doing that work. It will be conducted very early in the morning to minimize traffic impacts, and hopefully we won't have that four-letter word that begins with S before that time that will impact us. But December 3rd and 4th is our timeframe for starting to pick up all of the barriers that are on the state road going forward. But with that, I mistakenly put in my newsletter, if anybody did read it, I said that Lydia was going to be working on a cold weather update, and that really was I had on my mind, and I apologize to Lydia because she's doing posts after her, but what I had on my mind, we've had several requests from businesses, primarily restaurants, who are not out in the street to be able to continue into a longer period of time. Right? So I'm going to ask the board for input on this, because we've changed our laws, we've relaxed laws due because we're in a state of emergency, in a county state of emergency, that allows us to do what we did, right? That extension has been, by the governor, has been extended. We are still in a state of emergency. The county is still in a state of emergency, and every five days or whatever, the county renews our proposal to not enforce those laws as part of our process. But now we're going to be, we pull it off this state, we're going to be pulling off of Route 308, everything that's on East and West Market Street that's out there. But we do have several businesses that are not on the street.
Oh, so you're talking about in the courtyard, or in their parking lots, on the sidewalks?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Those that are no law, that are not using the street. Now, that presents an issue if you say you want to improve this shop to use the sidewalk, and now another shop who wants to use the sidewalk, are we going to allow that on East and West Market Street? So I think we have to have a discussion about what we want to do come December 3rd, or November 30th, when we start pulling and we say it's done. What do we want to, how do we want to handle this? If the weather is still amenable for businesses, retail and/or restaurants, to be out on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Clearly with less capacity though than what they have now.
They won't be in the street, that's for sure.
Right.
Right.
And you have to maintain all of the COVID restrictions, right? And, you know, on the sidewalks, we probably will not be putting, you know, on the short sidewalks, like on East Market Street here, there's no room for tents and canopies and, right, and all of that stuff. But on some other areas, in the parking lots that are privately owned and in larger section of sidewalks, there is room for that. Do we do it one for all, it's all, everybody the same? Or do you want to grant extensions to those who are not on the street, if they so choose to want to extend? That's really the question.
Is the concern that it gives them an unfair advantage over those who, you know, say, aren't right next to a parking lot?
It, it's always a competitive advantage if you can, the weather's amenable and you can serve people outside.
I get that.
We've seen what's happened, right? It worked very well during the season here to give more retail and most of our restaurants and most of our retail an opportunity to attract business.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think.
Winter's going to be hard.
Yeah.
And if we do it, how long do we do it for? Right? And how much you want to allow, and, and all of that? Or do you just want to say come December 3rd, you know, we really got to tuck things in for winter?
I don't see, just because of the inclement nature of, you know, what's going to happen in December, that that's do, it's doable anymore. It's just going to be really crappy weather. I don't think people are going to want to be out there. But I would need to, I would want to hear some feedback from merchants and.
That's what I'm telling you, restaurants and merchants have asked for it.
Supplemental heat and stuff like that, and.
Yeah, could they have those heaters on the sidewalk?
It might be dangerous to run those things when it's 20 degrees out, I would think, but.
No, I mean, they're being inspected regularly, and our, our, the law enforcement officer is on top of the use of heaters to make sure if they're using proper canopies, that they're to fire retardant and can, and that, so.
But I asked him about that, and he says they're not for use on sidewalks, so we don't really have any areas left, except for side, you know, sidewalks. None of the streets are going to be closed.
Well, I mean, so the question is, I mean, say like right now, a bunch of the restaurants have two tops, like right next to the building with, you know, the, the heater between them, not in this, not where people are walking, but in between the two tops, kind of thing. I mean, I personally don't see any reason that we should stop them from doing that in front of their own restaurants. I think as the restaurants begin to leak in front of retail and other spaces, I can imagine how that would be frustrating to the retail owner.
Unless they have approval. Some of them have given approval.
Right, unless they've come to an agreement.
Right.
But, you know, I, I think that if they want to keep a table out, in case of someone who's willing to eat outside when it's 50 degrees, I, I don't think we should get in the way of that. As long as there is space for people to use the sidewalk, and as long as they're using everything safely and abiding by all COVID rules, I'd like to figure out a way to be as helpful as possible to the businesses during this time.
Well, that's, it's.
Yeah.
That's going to be significantly, obviously significantly diminished, but.
Yeah. I mean, just taking away the Jersey barriers and their space in the street, obviously is hurting them, but we do have to deal with snow, so.
I mean, to me, it would be John Fenton question. I mean, as long as he thinks those propane torches are.
And they're inspected.
Well, I don't know, I just don't know what the setbacks are and stuff like that.
I, I could also imagine a scenario where a restaurant is choosing to have those two tops out on the sidewalk, abutted to their, to their restaurant building, and then there's snow, and then the furniture kind of gets stacked up there, and then what? It maybe just remains? Like, is there, is there a contingency there for stowing away some of that outdoor furniture?
Right, remove your furniture when it's snowing.
Yeah, just so it doesn't look like we've got piles of chairs and tables hanging out all over the village.
I think that's fair.
And, yeah, and I think keeping the sidewalk, I mean, I think it also goes directly to keeping the sidewalk clear and shoveled.
Yeah, right.
So if it does, if we do get significant snow, they're going to have to move those tables, the sidewalks may have to be clear as if there were no tables there, if they want to put them back. So, yeah, it's going to require more effort on their, on their part. I, one, I guess I think most of them think it's worth it.
I, I think, I don't know, I'm trying, trying to imagine what it must be like to be a business owner right now, and they're probably just trying to keep their options open, and so I, I'm very, I don't know, I feel a lot of empathy for that situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, I mean, we, yeah, we definitely talked about that a lot. I mean, we all do. I don't, I felt like we had the one discussion, and it was more like, I'm concerned about them and you aren't, and we've moved past that, so.
Yeah.
That part is understood.
Yeah. So the trick is how to sort of do it while keeping the sidewalks walkable, snow shoveled, everybody safe. I think if we, I mean, I'm happy to sit down with John and come up with sort of a set of ground rules on this, that.
That's what I was going to suggest. Why don't we have John write guidelines?
Yeah.
That would be allowable for going forward.
Yep, and I can pass it amongst you all, and, and then we can release it to the village.
So it sounds like in general we're in favor of wanting to allow businesses to make use of the sidewalks going forward during the cold weather.
Yeah.
Right? And that we will ask John and Lydia to come up with a draft of those guidelines that we can distribute out to businesses.
Yep, and I, and a few businesses have already reached out to me about this, and so I'm happy to engage them in the process as well.
Now, there's another thing, you know, we didn't like that remote option, but these are, this is a situation where it's not going to be attractive, is attractive to eat outside. So if there's any way we could utilize an empty parking lot for, you know, for taking your stuff and carrying it over there to a common area, that might be. your stuff and carrying it over there to a common area, that might be attractive in the winter.
You mean like what Red Hook has done with those tables?
Yeah.
Oh.
Red Hook has a takeout tent.
Yeah.
Takeout tent.
It's called a takeout tent.
I mean, you can't, unless you're probably an adjacent property owner, you can't have liquor there, but-
Yeah, we couldn't have that.
But they probably can. They can probably carry it, and then-
Has to be SLA approved to be able to do that.
Just to have like a drink in a container?
Yeah. So, Red Hook doesn't allow alcohol in that.
They don't allow that? Okay.
Right. And the other thing is you have to sanitize somebody. Here's the issue with that. Somebody has to maintain it. Somebody has to pick it up. Somebody has to scrub down the tables when, you know, if you sit down and you leave, who's scrubbing that table before I come in and sit down? I, you know, I mean, that's what the code requires right now, is tables be cleaned between people. So unless, if we were to do that, we have to put in a program that somebody has to maintain it. And the restaurants said they didn't want to do that. They didn't want to be responsible.
Well, they didn't, in summer, they didn't say, they said that.
Yeah.
Maybe, it's different times. I don't know.
Well, we can raise-
It's a little okay.
Yeah, I can raise it. It's a possibility. With that being a stipulation, that somebody has to maintain it.
All right. So Lydia, you and John are going to work on this, right?
Yep. We do.
Lydia, I also wanted to mention the, the post-COVID outdoor dining task force.
Yes.
You mentioned talking to restaurants and businesses.
And also some residents of, yeah, particularly in Livingston Street. But, yeah, I want to engage the residents on this as well.
I just want to make sure the planning board-
Oh, yes, and the planning board. I've already spoken to David Miller about it, and he's delighted to participate.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Brant.
Sure.
So anything else on that? And then I can go on to the historic district. All right. I am delighted, actually, to pick up where John Rossi left off with the historic district expansion, just because personally, I find historic preservation fascinating. The historic district expansion has gone through the state. It is in the final draft stages. They're about to finalize it and send it to the feds. Because of COVID, they are keeping the objection period open until the federal process is complete. And so they will receive objections and, and forward them to the feds if that's where the application process is. And so if you have an objection, feel free to submit it to the state according to the letter that you received. But otherwise, I wanted to make it clear that this is, at the moment, a state and federal expansion. The village asked for it because we were concerned about losing some of our important structures. And so that is going to be an ongoing conversation inside this organization here. But it doesn't, once the state signs off on it, and once the federal government approves it, it does not automatically expand our historic district. We have to, as a board, make a decision about that. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood how the order of operations fell out with this. The minute that the state approves the expansion, I do want to let you know that there are state tax credits available to people who do renovations on historically significant homes. So that is a nice advantage to having your house inside a district. And otherwise, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm still learning about this as part of my getting up to speed in this role. And so any questions that you have for me only help me learn. So that is what I have so far, and I will keep you updated as I know more.
Well, I wonder, in the, in the way of trying to get information out, that if we could-
Yeah.
Also draft something to send to those areas, Oak, Platte, Mulberry, et cetera.
And, yep, and Mill.
And Mill.
Yeah, I'm working on an, on a, on an email that we can talk, on some kind of communication, whether it can go out as an email, on the listserv, or, and/or just a flyer. You know, I'll, let's stay in communication about that. But I do think it's important to help people understand what's going on, because they've been getting communications from the state, but they haven't yet gotten any communications from the village. And so I think it's important that we let people know that we know what's going on.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Highway. Okay. Put my, so, take my mask off, I'm going to say it again. So we have begun leaf collection, however, the leaf truck is currently broken. And the leaf truck is broken because it can handle only leaves. It can't handle brush, stones, other kinds of debris. So it's very important that people segregate their piles, that they have a brush pile in one place and a leaf pile in the other place. The brush that they picked up by VACCO, the leaf truck can pick up the leaves. So if you've been wondering, where's the leaf truck? Unfortunately, its major impeller blade was damaged. We hope to have it back on the road tomorrow. But in order to keep it up and running, we do have to make sure that residents segregate their brush pile and their leaf pile, and that there are only leaves in the leaf pile. Other than that, the highway department helped repair the broken water main on Garden Street. They've been out molting the leaves on the parks. They've been doing some tree trimming to make sure that the sightlines on roadways are good. And they've also been spreading millings in their own parking lot. Basically, this is a recycling project. These were millings that were taken from the water project and had no other homes. So we're actually using them to improve the parking and fill in some holes and such like that in back of the highway department. That's it. And did I say that please don't put anything but leaves in the leaf pile?
I think you should say that again at the end of the meeting.
I please do. It's expensive for us.
Yeah.
It's expensive for us to repair. Right? So this is a big piece of equipment that we need to keep operating. Water department.
So I'm going to jump to wastewater, because I don't want to forget that that's a perfect segue. Baby wipes do not go down the drain. Only paper, only toilet paper goes down the drain. A lot of times, those things will say that they're, they're-
Flushable.
They're sewer friendly, or whatever. It is absolutely not true. We're having quite a bit of problems with the lift stations, and I won't say which one in particular, but the motors are getting destroyed like every few months, and it is really a problem, so.
Last year, we sent out a notification on this.
Yeah.
We could do it again.
Could that go with the bill?
The residents of this particular area have been getting, they got a private notification.
Okay.
So we should keep an eye on it, and then maybe, yeah.
They have like a brochure we could, that we could include with the water and sewer level.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
But I think there's like a, it might be Drs. County Department of Health or the DDC, that they have like a standard brochure, but it would be good to just read-
Maybe even like a specific note, like on the bill, if you're, if you can just like, add something, you know, just to remind you.
I don't know, I think it has to be big.
Let me just say, let me check with the county and see if they provide the brochures, if they provide them with their color, and they have a picture of the sewer and all that.
Where did we get the one last, we got a, well, Karen, you and I pulled the one together last year.
I know. I think that, I forgot when we got it, but I'll check that out, and that will be a good reminder for everybody.
Can we send them back?
This is back to water. We have finished a landscaping project at the, at the highly road water tank, and it's really, you know, it was expensive, but it's really nice, so. I've requested from Red Cedar Landscaping that they give us a maintenance plan. We have a, we put a spigot out there at the building. We're going to need about 300, 300 feet of hose, and I don't think any maintenance is required for the rest of the, for the rest of the year, because the plants are kind of dormant now, but-
I agree with you. It looks great.
Yeah, so we have to keep that investment. And it's going to save a lot on mowing and bushwhacking and things, because it takes up quite a bit of an area, so.
If you haven't had opportunity, go up by the highly road reservoir, check it out.
Okay.
We have, though, as far as the consolidation study for both water and wastewater, we should have phase, phase two's forecast to be done by November 13th, so we'll see if that comes in. And phase two will have, phase one identified deficiencies and great things about the plants, but phase two will have, will have estimated costs for those capital items that need to be conducted for the water department in particular, because there's more deferred maintenance with that. I do have a quote from Chrissy for a automatic letter folder, because we don't have folks coming in, and she just can't do it, and it's, it takes like, she spends an entire day doing just one zone. This item is state bid, so we did have another bid come in on a letter folder for like three grand. This is a Staples item, Staples, the store. $993.37, and it's state bid, so we don't have to go out and fetch, you know, more, a couple more bids. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the letter folder.
Second.
Purchase.
Any discussion?
Can it be used for more than just the water department?
Yeah.
It can be used, very easily.
Great.
You guys can use it.
Great.
I don't know, they'll charge you.
All right.
For a fee.
For a fee. Excellent.
For the general fund.
And, Brant, I assume it's compatible with whatever we send out now? That's really the question there.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
The other, the last little thing is, I know we don't use the radios in the water department, and we get a small invoice every month for, for radios, right? For, I know they use it with, in wastewater, they still like to use them, but we don't, we're not even using those radios.
Well, Chrissy does, she uses it to, I mean, they have them in the truck, too, and when she needs to call them, if they don't answer the phone, and they're not in the yard.
Okay, I'll check on Chrissy's end, because Brian said they just never, maybe he just doesn't know. Maybe she's able to reach out to Tony or something like that.
Yeah, why don't you check?
I just wanted to look into that, so. Brian didn't think they needed it at all. I know, there wasn't a lot going on in the water department this month.
Probably very refreshing.
Brant, I brought that up earlier. We do pay for all the departments, contract radio fees every, on a monthly basis.
That's what I'm talking about.
And so in today's age, do we really need to have the radios again?
Yeah.
How much is it?
I don't remember.
And I think we should all, I'm sorry.
It's, it's like, not just a pittance.
Yeah, I mean-
I know John was using it, but even now, he picks up the phone and calls them.
Yeah.
So-
I was with Brian Bacama today. He said we still use it, you know, when we're going and sewer leaks and stuff like that, but-
Yeah, we could text them, too, if they're home.
Yeah.
If they're not at the point.
Why don't we take a survey of?
Yeah.
Who wants to, not just for water, water, wastewater, and highway.
Yeah, let's look into that for everything. Just, I mean, this is just the-
Yeah, because that's pretty useless.
Going the way of dangers.
It's hundreds of dollars every month.
Yeah.
Yeah. To pay for a Christmas tree.
So with, I think that's it for water. Oh, and we're still trying to get the Conway generator. I suspect that they had a hard time getting the generator in, but we're trying to get this done before the end of the year, before it gets cold, because they have to pour the slab and everything. As far as wastewater, not a lot. I just, we'll, we'll see what comes out of that report for the cantaloupe consolidation study. I had a concern about confined spaces training for both departments, water and wastewater. I mean, they're, they're going into trenches, you know, when we're digging, when we have water leaks. In this, this sphere of wastewater, there's that type of sulfuric acid, I think it is. It's, can, it instantly is toxic, you know, when you go into a manhole and stuff like that. And I don't believe that we have a program for confined spaces training.
We do not. We are not certified to go in confined space.
Right.
We don't have the, we don't have the proper equipment to be able to do it.
But, I mean, I think they're in those situations. I don't know if there's a, a shorter course that they can take, or, I mean, I know that the guys, they get, they go into those settlement tanks in the water department, and even in a non-waste water atmosphere, you can have sewer gases in some of these spaces. And you can also have, when you're digging holes and trenches, you can have, especially the loose fill that's around here because of our soil can just fall in, if you don't use the box. So-
Can you check into my, I think, I like contracting that out.
No, I just wanted them to take the class.
Oh.
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't want to do that.
Oh, I thought you wanted us to do it.
No, I just wanted to approve them, because they're not taking these classes, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you know anything about this, Karen, but-
Yeah, I'll check and see. But, yeah, definitely they should have, they could do a confined space like policy to make sure everyone's standing above and under it.
You know, Brant, I know Cornell Cooperative Extension has programs for highway departments, and I wonder if there might be some overlap, especially in terms of trenching and stuff like that.
Yeah, Brian Bacama was, took it for the fire, because of the fire department, yeah, as a firefighter.
Yep.
Because they do, you know, they're taught how to do rescues and things like that. So I think that's a-
You done?
Yeah.
Vanessa. Environmental.
All right, great. Well, good segue from Brant, because this is the environmental purchasing policy. This is something that Karen and Brant and I have been working on, and, and there's a couple, I don't think we're ready to vote on it tonight, but I would really appreciate some discussion. One of the elements is the dollar thresholds, the kind of, the thresholds by which it triggers a new way that you have to evaluate, get permission for purchases. And so there's what's currently in the code, and then there was a draft that Karen and I did. And then Brant suggested a way to even simplify it further. So the, what we're proposing is that for both purchases and public works, $0 to $999 would be at the discretion of the purchasers, as per our regular purchasing policy. That purchases, so, not public works, but other purchasing, $1,000 to $19,000, or 1999?
$999.
$999. That would be, quote, "good faith effort to obtain three written facts or email quotes." And then above $20,000, that is the mandated threshold for the formal bid process. Then for public works, we would have the 1,000 to 29, 999. Again, the good faith effort to obtain three written facts, email quotes. And then over 30 grand and above is the mandated threshold for the formal bid process. So in a way, this proposal simplifies it into just three thresholds instead of four. And it gets rid of like a telephone option versus email written facts, since we should, the thinking is we should have something in writing. And, and then it also gets rid of the, via written request for proposals, which is currently the phrasing in the code, and replaces that with the good faith effort.
Because I don't recall ever, actually, we did it tonight, we did a written request for a proposal, but that is so rare, when we do that, I just don't know that it's, you know, necessary to. Where we actually do a written request for proposals instead of just obtaining three different bids.
And, and does the language "good faith effort" kind of encompass that?
But the written requests for the proposals coming back, not necessarily. I guess it doesn't. I guess you're saying the same thing. A good faith effort just means that by calling, tell you what we're looking for to replace.[1733.16]
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, you know, giving you a written request.
It sounds, the way it's written right now, it sounds like an RFP process, which is.
Well, the only thing that, the only thing that protects you when you do, do the written request is that you either have an email or you have some kind of documentation that you asked for and that they gave it to you and.
Right, that's a big thing, tonight, Karen, I think you brought up a good point. You know, it's great to document who you contacted, who you spoke to and, you know, not to say anything, I just made a good faith, it's like, we need to have the documentation.
Can you, can you prove the good faith, I think is what we're saying there.
So, well, I'll give you an example, like, when, we just did the tile, you know, at the wastewater last month, I brought in three bids, but what also a written request for proposal is actually, to your credit, it would be, you do have to write the scope of work in your request, so you got the apples, what, frequently what we do is we have apples and oranges and we try to sort out whether there are apples and apples here at this desk, but, I mean, how frequently do we actually do a written RFP?
I, I kind of look at it as a written coming back to you.
I think it's a written request for a proposal from the, from the offeror.
Right, but if you're, if you're going to email and say you're looking to replace a 200 horsepower Ford Elbow or whatever, but that's, even though it's one sentence, it's still a written request.
What do you like, or do we do, we could use both options.
So, Ben, there's two components to this, one is, if you set that out, zero to nine ninety-nine at the discretion, at whose discretion?
So, what, in our current code, we have, we're supposed to designate one person from each department, the department head, they're the, they're the ones that can have, they have purchasing authority in that department and so it's, it would be at their request.
Yeah, we, we have to make sure that that level of.
It's in our code.
Yeah, I know, but it's maintained, because we're, now we're changing the dollar amount.
What we haven't maintained.
Because now it's up to 500, now we're going to 1,000, basically.
Right, so what we haven't maintained is we're supposed to designate that person every two years according to GML, but we can do it at our reord meetings too and we'll just, not only are we saying that, that Brian Bacama was the chief wastewater operator, but we can also say, and, and purchasing agent for the wastewater department. That way we're designating that person every year is, is having that purchasing authority.
That's good.
That's a good idea.
It forces you to look at it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My one question, and this is slightly tangential in terms of public works, we have had some issues and in public works below thirty thousand dollars, where we've taken some bids and people have been very slow to do the job, we haven't had any kind of performance bonding or haven't given any kind of date that we need to have the work done. And also, in the public works, there can also be, as you say, the apple, apples to oranges issue. I don't, you know, I think actually the good faith effort, but I think we need to think about how, you know, when we do put out specific, put specifications out, we need to be clear and probably put some timelines on it, because we have gotten in the situation where I said before that, you know, we, somebody said, oh yes, I'll do the job and it was a great price and then four months later, we're still, hey, what happened?
Yeah, that's important, to put a timeframe on it.
I'm not sure that that belongs here, but it just, while we're talking about.
It's almost like a performance bond.
Right, but I don't know that that.
It doesn't need to be here, but on.
It has to be in, you know.
We need to work on it, we need to work on that.
We need to. The award process needs to be formalized.
Yeah. So, what I'm hearing is, if you guys want to re, keep that written request for proposal, but we were blurring two price categories, because one was just get three bids, the other one is do a written request for proposal for three bids, for your bigger ticket items, like in a public work setting, 25 grand or something. So do you guys want to keep the four categories?
I think the three categories make sense, yeah. I think the three categories make sense and I think anything kind of above the discretion level, I think it's important for the purchaser to have, you know, evidence of three quotes. And so I think that's, where that's helpful in terms of not having a telephone quote.
I think that's covered, I mean.
Yeah.
I think anything above the 20,000 and 30,000, you're going to get sealed bids, but you're going to have to formal bidding for that.
The what?
Anything above the 20,000 and 30,000.
Thirty-five thousand, yeah, we have to.
You're going to go out to formal bid, so you're just going to get three quotes for those.
It's actually 35,000.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's a typo. Typo, sorry.
My only hack is just to increase that public works to the, to 999, just because that's like any kind of service you would have, if you needed someone to come in and do something, a thousand really kind of ties your hands.
Well, like, well, again, going back to the flooring at the wastewater, it was 2,500 and he's still got three bids, so, I mean, I know, I don't mind doing that, I think it's maybe a little more cumbersome in the highway department because you guys buy stuff all the time, but.
Well, I'd like to go back to Karen's comment a little bit, because there is emergency purchases that need to be made and we need to empower the employees, empower them to, so they don't have to go out and wait weeks or a month for a meeting to make this emergency purchase.
We have that in the code, yes.
I know, but still, it's bound, it's bound by the dollar limit in a lot of cases as well.
It what?
Isn't it already bound by the dollar limit as well? So, by raising the threshold, I believe it, it covers more of those emergency.
We could actually do a $60,000 emergency purchase if we had to, it's, emergencies and emergencies.
But then the board does it, the board has to meet.
The board has to authorize.
The board has to authorize.
It has to deem it.
But if it's up to 1,000, you know, the emergency purchase as well, it was 500, you're raising it to 1,000, basically, I think that's great, because today, in today's time, there's nothing, there's, everything is a thousand dollars, it seems.
Yeah.
And it gives the, it gives the authorization of that plant manager to be able to make that decision.
Yeah.
And pull that trigger to get that part right away.
Yeah.
So, the wastewater plant isn't down, the water plant isn't down, we got to fix tobacco, right? We got to fix whatever, we can make those decisions, but we, we are going to monitor them because we sign off on all the invoices.
And your department head's going to still be overseeing the purchase.
Right.
And also, that's, you're supposed to look at the, that's a cumulative thing for a year, that, so, that zero to 500 dollar category is kind of ridiculous, I mean, it's just.
I think we're saying the same thing, we're all, I think we're all agreeable to move this up to 1,000, we're all agreeable to allow department heads to have that discretion, right?
And that's already in there.
Yeah, so, we're just, we're simplifying the process from going to multiple, four categories down to three categories. So it sounds logical to me.
Like I said, my only recommendation would be to increase the public works, even to like 2,000 or 2,500, just so if they had to have something done, a service, something done, then they could go, they could have it done.
Yeah.
Do we all agree with that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking like, I mean, like, I'm trying to think of what falls still, like, the vac truck was 2,800, I think, this year, and I know that John called around.
Twenty-eight to have it repaired.
No, 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 the vacuum truck, to have somebody come vacuum out the sewers, a ser, a public work service.
Right, that would fall into his being able to do that, if it was under the 2,999.
So your concern, Karen, is that a thousand dollars isn't really enough for department heads to be sort of doing day-to-day activities?
I think it's okay for a purchase, like, but for a public works, for a service or to have, to contract to have something done, I think it's a little bit low.
It's too low.
Yeah, I get that.
You know, you needed somebody to come in with a back truck, I mean, that's going to be 2,500 to 3,000 a day to do something and, I don't know, that's just mine.
I know, I could see both ways, but.
So, public works for the category of zero dollars to 1,999, is what we're proposing, just for public work?
The third category, public works.
I think Karen wanted it, the.
Right, it's.
Zero to 2,999.
Right, it's public purchases and public works make the first threshold for purchases and have another one for public works.
Okay.
For zero to.
2,999. Is that right, zero to 2,999 for public works?
And then do the 3,000.
How about 2,500?
All right, we have a deal?
All right, let's get moving on, it's 7:45.
Okay. So, Vanessa, how do you want to structure this, because we have different ideas.
Well, and you sent out this afternoon a proposal for changing the code to allow us to then change the policy without needing to change the code.
Could I, could I say something about that first?
Yes.
This, so the, this 104B is a general municipal law and it, and it says that by resolution, you adopt policies for those things that are less than the public bid stuff. So we know by now that that's 20,000 for services, for purchases and 35 for public works. So, and it goes through the checklist of all the things that your, your resolution can have, that doesn't mean you can't pass it by law also. So, and what we did before is we, we have our entire procurement policy as a code and it includes these 104B items as well as conditioning all purchases, it's just a sweeping code about a procurement policy. It wouldn't be cumbersome, I don't believe, to just add the new environmental stuff to the old code, because, you know, painstakingly went through it and there were a lot of this stuff, it seems like you've abandoned your original draft, but I'm not sure, but we can just add the new stuff to the old stuff and just pass a new public hearing, I don't think it will be hotly contested, I mean, it would seem to be, it would be like as sleepy as a public hearing we had earlier tonight.
Or, if we're going to go through the, the bother of changing the code, why not change the code in such a way that it refers to the purchasing policy, which could be updated by resolution, so that next time we want to adjust these numbers, or we want to add some, something to do with the fleet efficiency policy, what have you, then the code can stay as-is and we just update the, the purchasing policy by resolution.
By resolution.
Good idea.
But I don't want to lose some of that stuff that covers other things that are outside of 104B, so that's the challenge. Because our purchasing, our, like, our best value standard is a magic, you know, it's a term of art.
Right.
It triggers all sorts of state law stuff.
So I think what.
I think we can do both, probably, right?
I think what we should agree, what we could agree to is this idea that we want to have the code be as, as robust, the balance is as, as robust as possible without tying us down to having to pass new code every time we want to make a little change. So, the, like, the evergreen stuff, the real bones of the law.
And I think adding aspects of the new environmental stuff to the code is a good idea, because it shows who we are as a village and all the rest of it.
Right, so, in the new code, it could refer, it could say, please refer to the environmental aspects of the purchasing policy, so that it's there in the code, you have to have an environmentally preferable purchasing aspect of your purchasing policy, but you don't have to spell out all the details in the, in the code, you can just refer to the purchasing policy. So I think we have some work to do to figure out what that new version of the code is, but.
Yeah, there's some sacred stuff I think is missing.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think a hybrid makes a lot of sense, frankly.
So we could put the price categories in a resolution?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And we can put the environmental stuff in the resolution.
Great, cool. All right, so we'll work on that some more.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. A couple more items, I know we're running late, but, so, that, that was a big one, thank you. Another big one coming down the, the way is, as you guys know, we have David Chernak, who's our Bard CEP intern, and he's been hard at work reviewing the comprehensive plan and all of our policies through the lens of the environment and climate, and his internship is going to be over before we know it, mid-December, and so we definitely want to have him do a public informational session about his findings, week of December 14th to 18th. And, and I would want everyone to come to that and, and would, would really, would want to promote that as an opportunity for people to learn about his work. But then I started thinking, wow, that's, there's a lot of context that I think the public could really do with understanding before jumping into a meeting with David, talking about comprehensive plan and environmental policy. So, what I've drafted is basically like a communications plan for how to roll that out and, and I'm also, you know, I hear from the public all the time, well, you know, why am I just hearing about this now? So, what I, we're going to very intentionally try to lead people along and kind of chunk out the information, so that when we do have this informational meeting and he finishes his project, that we're in a better situation where people understand why he was doing this and, and what is a comprehensive plan. So, yeah, just wanted to share that with the group and see if you have any thoughts about that. I know mid-December is a tricky time, but that's the end of his internship, it was a six-month internship that started this summer. Great. Because it's a big deal, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a lot of content there, though.
There's a lot of content, it's a lot, and so, I'm trying to really think of how do I, how do I piecemeal it out a bit, so it's not overwhelming. So it might be, you know, a series of communications. It might, I would also like to do something that's really engaging with the public, to get their take on what is, what do they think is important to the village and to the town, this is, again, out of the joint environmental committee with town and village, so.
I have some thoughts and I want to discuss later with you, not tonight, but I'll just plant the seed as phase two.
Right.
You know, how can we keep David and maybe go forward with a phase two plan?
Okay.
To do that.
Okay. Right, okay. An update on the salt brine, road salt reduction, village and town highway departments have identified the trucks and tanks, and so now this piece is creating the gizmo that would spray the salt brine onto the roads, and both John Fenton and Bob Wyant, their mechanics are working on this, and we're hoping to have that done before December, in time for the four-letter word that begins with S. And, and Bob has gotten the okay from his contact at the Ulster DOT to fill up our tanks with their brine for some trial runs, so that's exciting. And, again, getting back to this theme of communicating with the public, David has written, David Chernak, our intern, has written a blog post all about what is salt brine, why do we need to reduce road salt, like, what's the deal here? And I'm going to write a little bit more of a scannable, like FAQs, and hope to get that up on the Climate Smart website, so we don't have a situation where we have trucks spraying stuff on the roads before winter storm and people are like, what are they doing? So.
Well, we'll have that, but at least now we know where to point them, when that happens.
Yes, right. And we, we had a really good meeting with the folks from Adirondacks pilot, and they actually shared with us the shared services grant that they received from Department of State to help pay for a mobile brine maker that they have mounted on a truck that goes, now it's a nine municipalities around Lake George, that are all using this salt brine mobile depot to fill up their trucks and spray in their local municipalities. So, don't want to get ahead of myself, but it's exciting to think that there might be an opportunity to really share the wealth and the, these environmental practices in the area, but that's all TBD, first things first, we're going to do a pilot this winter, that's very low cost. Energy navigators have been trained from the Cornell Cooperative Extension, Curly Frechero Lee and Andrew Hunter are now available to meet with residents free of cost and to talk to them about how to make their homes more energy efficient and save money. They are also trained in all the ins and outs of rebates and incentives from New York State, so they, they're navigators, they're there to help you get through that decision-making process. So, to introduce them to the public, we've set November 18th at 5:30, it's a Wednesday, as a public info session online, so Curly and Andrew will be there to do a short presentation about what they're offering as, as free volunteers to the community and then some Q and A, and hopefully we'll get some people signed up to take advantage of this new program. And again, this is also a collaboration between the town and the village, so it's open not just to village, but also to town residents. And the other things were just kind of status updates on my report, so we don't have to go into those. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Tree report.
I don't have the formal tree report, but on this last Saturday, the tree commission did its annual fall planting, we planted 14 trees, I believe, we broke into pods so that we'd all be COVID, COVID safe, and I. And I would really like to thank all the members of the Tree Commission and all the people who volunteered. I'll have a full list, but this has been a committee that, over the years, has planted literally hundreds of trees in and around Rhinebeck and has done so much to beautify our village. And so, if you see, if you go into the village and you see there's some trees with posts around them, maybe a big berm of dirt at the bottom that's actually mulch that we get from our own highway department, that we make at our own highway department. Those are all the result of volunteer efforts, and they have been terrifically important to the beauty of our town. So, I'll have a full list of names next month, but a thank you to all the volunteers and the Tree Commission.
Rick, can you get a total number of trees? Because I know when we were out there Saturday, we were trying to take a guess of how many trees we planted. I, you know.
I mean, over, it's a big number.
I know, it's a big number. So, I think that number would be great to share.
Sure. Did I mention that you shouldn't put brush in the leaf pot?
What about baby wipes?
Don't put baby wipes, flush baby wipes. Keep the brush and the leaf separate. Keep the baby wipes in the trash can.
Okay, moving on. Did he mention something about not putting brush?
I seem to remember something about it.
All right, okay, Autism Support Committee. I want to just remind everybody that we are continuing to meet as an Autism Support Committee. We do have the funding approved to be able to move forward for our second phase goals. I'm not going to go through it as long letter, but I hope everybody had a chance to read what Chairman Joe Phelan has put together on what our goals are and our status that we're moving forward with to try to increase awareness for autism support within our community. I do want to share one event that shows that this really has paid off. This past couple of weekends ago, I was in the village in the business segment, and there was a lot of activity going on. And there was this young man, young gentleman, who was severely having, who was, you could tell. And because of the training that I received because of doing autism support, I knew right away, identified, and I was able to approach the parents and say, listen, you know, and say, we are an autism-supported community, and here's what we do, and we have businesses that can support you in this. And oh, by the way, if you went to this business right now, you could help you and your son with what's going on, and she did. And she was so thankful that the village of Rhinebeck has taken this effort. So, just a little sidebar on that, but please read our report because we're really trying to complete our goals to get our grant approved, which is approved, and improve not only what we're doing, but increase the awareness within the village of hashtag one thing from greater than 58%. Okay. Other business, outdoor dining cleanup, I think we covered, right? Anybody have any questions to update that? Not, I'd like to move on to, we've been talking on the side about our website, right, Vanessa?
Yes.
And where we're going, so an update on how we want to proceed.
Yes, so, I just got a little bee in my bonnet. And I started looking into ways that we could make our website easier to navigate and a better source of information for our community. As we know, it's really hard to communicate with the public in this era, not just COVID, but in general, with the lack of newspapers and social media being a fraught place. So, the other thing is, in the past few years, there's been this new advent of companies that provide a person with the tools to create their own website and maintain that website themselves without necessarily needing the assistance of a professional to maintain or design that website. So, I looked into some pricing. WordPress, for instance, is a very popular option. That's $25 a month. If you want to add an e-commerce, it's $45 a month. Squarespace is $18 a month, and then you can upgrade to $26 a month if you wanted to build in things like customer accounts and e-commerce. And so, I know one of the things in chatting with Martina that's been a challenge is if people want to buy mulch, they have to come with a check or to pay your building department fees, for instance. So, having some e-commerce could be a possibility for us to explore. But I think at a minimum.
Like water and sewer payments, even.
Yeah, at a minimum, having a way for Martina to be able to communicate messages to the public in a more immediate way and in a way that looks, that looks beautiful and that looks current, that looks 2020. So, what I'd like to propose is that we pursue the Squarespace option. And currently, our website is maintained by a vendor, and it's quite expensive. So, this is something that I would like to take on as a project.
Look, I mean, you've already created a prototype.
Mm-hmm.
Just so everybody knows. And we haven't distributed it yet, but it is a prototype, and it looks, if you've seen our, the environmental website that is linked to our website, it follows along the same flow and pattern with the environmental website. So, it's refreshing, it's new, it's current, and usability is so much greater. It gives us the ability to make changes on the fly. It gives us the ability to communicate to the public easier in terms of email distribution, which we are using right now. We can embed all of that in. So, all of our communication could be now be handled better and quicker and easier in-house than what we are doing externally right now.
For example, you could have a form that says, that's on the page for the Board of Trustees, that says, do you want to submit a public comment? Just fill out this form, and it would get sent to that media email address that we created. But it's just a really more clean design and a way for the public to be able to interact with us easier and to get what's new in a way that's maybe a bit more visual. So, for example, the Tree Committee, we just planted all those trees. We could have pictures of that and say, by the way, are you interested in volunteering? Here's how. So, I'm excited about it, and I think it would be an improvement.
So, the issue tonight is to approve the payment for Squarespace. We have a trial period that is expiring, and if we don't, I mean, we'd have to figure out another way. But I'd like to make a motion that we pay for 18, what is it, 18 or?
It's $18 a month.
$18 a month for Squarespace for us to develop with Vanessa's help the new website.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? We're not going to take down the old, just leave everybody.
No, there would have to be old transition plans.
The old's staying until we're done.
Are there? Just one question. Are there any special security issues for municipalities?
Currently, our website is not secure.
So, yes, there are.
I'll put that out of the bag. All right, all right, sorry. And then, is it pretty easy to maintain a municipal calendar on this website?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And it doesn't have, Martina would be able to do that herself. It wouldn't have to go out to a third party.
I'd have all access to do everything on this website as opposed to utilizing what we use now to have them posted.
So, it sounds like, even in the short term, it's a much cheaper option, yeah, let alone the long term.
Right.
Like, cheaper and better and all the things.
So, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's go get them.
Thank you, everybody. I'm so excited.
I have Pedlar's permit application. Just, I'm going to summarize this without pulling it up. Everybody's had, hopefully, had a chance to look at it. This is the one for the water, correct? The water?
Yes.
Yeah, so, basically, we have a company that Sergeant Dunn has looked at, who wants to go around and ask village residents to submit water samples. All right, and then they would get back to the residents on grading their water supply. So, we do this as a village already. If anybody calls at any time, we do, we do go out and we do tests, right? But I don't know, difference of the test, I haven't had a chance to see that. I don't know if, Bran, if you had a chance to look at it, but.
We have to do the water, annual water quality report.
Right.
We comply with the 10-state standard for everything we do.
It's a private company that primarily focuses on hardness.
Right.
Oh, on hard, yeah.
On hard, on water hardness.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah.
Calcium magnesium. I don't think, yeah, I don't, we shouldn't, I mean.
Let's be blunt, I don't see the reason for doing this.
I can see, I can see them going around in the town with people with well water.
Absolutely.
But I was concerned that people, I mean, it says in the fine print, this is not an official from the city.
But it comes across as an official from the city.
Yeah, and I think it just raises alarm bells that, is there something wrong with my water? And I don't know.
Yeah.
And I also think it's one of those things where if they want to find a problem, they could find a problem.
Well, their incentive is to try to sell them some system or additive.
Is a free con to sell, sell something.
Water softener, that's what you do.
Yeah, it's in their interest to say, it's in their interest to say, we've got a problem here. Buy our thing. I don't like it.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we really do not need another third-party company to come in and sample our water for the village of Rhinebeck. Well, let's deny the Pedlar's permit application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Minutes approval, 10:13, 10:21, 11:05. 10:21, 11:05 were our.
Q and A's.
Community forums. 10:13 was our last village board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Martina, did you, you got my one suggestion?
I didn't, I didn't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, personnel. Employee number 11 would like to have a buyout of their vacation. Karen has looked at this. We know that they have the time to be able to buy out. It's not a complete buyout, but it is an option that we give to all of our employees who have accrued time to actually buy out their vacation or any portion of that vacation. So, I'd like to make a motion that we allow employee 11 to buy out their vacation. Any questions? Have a second?
Second.
You did? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? November anniversaries. John Romando. If anybody doesn't know John Romando, he's around this building and the police building and all the time. He puts a tremendous amount of effort into doing a lot of, a lot of work here within our, within our public municipality. John Romando, thank you for your 20 years for the village of Rhinebeck. Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator, David Seacord. Time flies, two years. David, welcome. Glad you're here. Thank you for being a member of the village of Rhinebeck. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, 8:11.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you all, and please, don't miss your leaves.